All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 29th meeting of the Town of Abingdon Planning Commission. Mr. Boswell, we have a roll call for attended persons.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sprouls?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Marany?
Here.
Mr. Schuman?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you very much. Attached to your agenda that was previously provided to you is a copy of the September 23rd, 2019 minutes. I hope you've had the opportunity to review those. Are there any changes, additions, or other modifications to those minutes?
I believe they'd be accepted as submitted.
A second?
Say.
Any additional discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Upstanding.
Yes, sir. I'll pass those down to you, sir. I've already endorsed them. You're ready to go. All right, next on our agenda tonight is an opportunity for the public to comment. That's public comments can be regarding matters that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Please remember to come to the podium, give us your first and last name, your complete physical address, and your comments must be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone, if your matter is on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity as we go through the agenda to address the commission. But if there is anyone that would like to make any public comments, now is the time to do that. All right, seeing no rush to the podium, I will move on. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for a special use permit. George Reeves, the owner, 332 East Main Street, Abingdon, Virginia. Matt Bundy, 190 East Main Street here in Abingdon is the representative for this matter. The application is to add a master bathroom and cover porch on the side of the garage with side access for mower and bike storage. Property is located at 332 East Main Street in Abingdon, tax map number 013-1-84. I'd like to declare at this time that the public hearing is open for comment and invite anyone who would like to make comments regarding this application to approach the podium. Give us your name and physical address and make your remarks to the planning commission, please.
Mr. Bundy, go right ahead. Yes, my name's Matthew Bundy. I live at 190 East Main Street, Abingdon, Virginia. This is the proposal is to just do an addition onto the side of the existing house that everyone knows as the Crigger House. The house itself is above the floodplain. This addition will be elevated to the same floor so the foundation may be in a hundred-year flood gets a little bit of water on it, but we've attached the analysis to show there's no rise from this addition. And then he's adding on to the garage in the back that also would be in a hundred-year floodplain.
All right, any questions from the planning commission concerning this proposal?
How far away is that from the creek?
Um...
Ten, twenty foot?
It's good, it's probably about twenty feet. I'll tell you off the top of my head. Is there a drawing that shows it better?
Oh, well, it's faded in.
Yeah. Yeah. Where's the person who, Mr. Reeves, who owns the property, he's an architect, so he actually prepared all the plans, and we just did the flood study. He's in Europe right now, so he has us to represent him for this meeting. But, so I'm not super familiar with the drawings per se, but it's pretty, walking it with him, it's, and it's lined up with the existing edge of the house, so you really don't even see it.
So I know that area back there is, floods pretty easy.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
As far as I remember, it's underground spring, but that's what had me puzzled, you know, later on down the road, if it was going to be any effect on that.
I've warned him that there's a lot of groundwater right there, and he needs to take precautions on that. He, fortunately where he is, the creek is pretty obstructed already by the pipes of the air, and so anything he does really doesn't obstruct it, but you can see his additions kind of on the back.
Right.
So the water cleanly just gets right by it without really affecting the flood.
So the only living space is the addition to the house?
Correct.
The bathroom addition to the house?
Yeah.
And that's two stories?
Does he have elevations in there? I'm not actually sure.
Yeah, it is two stories.
Yeah. The other storage space is attached to the garage.
Yeah, exactly.
I read your analysis and understood some of it, but I think it's...
Yeah, that's pretty...
Yeah, that's just where, you know, later on down the road, if you want to...
Yeah, even if they clear, if they open up pipes in the creek, it's still, the way his addition is set back, it wouldn't empty the flood.
Yeah, it would get flooded.
Yeah, but he will have to take measures for the groundwater, for sure. I'm sure I'll run into it.
All right, any additional questions from Mr. Bundy? Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comments during this public hearing, either in favor of or opposed to the special use permit? Anyone else?
I'd like to ask a question. Jason, does the town look at this, what does staff say?
The recommendation was to approve it as it did based off of Mr. Bundy's point of analysis.
Okay. Anyone else at this time? All right, if not, I'll declare that the public hearing is closed. I'll entertain any comments or motions by the planning commission regarding this special use permit.
All I believe that we accept it as submitted based on Mr. Bundy's presentation and the comments on what staff had accepted.
Is there a second?
I have second.
All right, sir. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Boswell, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sprouls?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Marany?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye. All right, very good. Moving on in our agenda tonight, we go to two certificates of appropriateness that have been filed. The first is an application for a certificate of appropriateness. Field Greer, Greer Land Company developer, Marathon Realty Company owner, a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of an existing building at 510 Coming Street, Abingdon, Virginia, and the construction of a four-story, 88-room Hampton Inn hotel with associated utilities, landscaping, and access and driving aisles with additional improvements in landscaping to existing parking areas. This property is located at 510 Coming Street, Abingdon, Virginia, tax map ID number 105A-2-16. Would you like to give us an overview of this, as much as possible?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was the original site plan that was submitted along with the elevations and renovations from Hampton Inn. And then, in having conversation with Mr. Spangler, this will not be looked at tonight as part of the overall site plan for the Hampton Inn, which is being at the Hampton Inn. I think that at some time, KVA will come back and give us an update on the revised parking situation if some requirement to match. And the staff looked at the site plan, circulated amongst the other departments, and we can take compliance with the interest of requirements and site plans.
So mainly this deals with the demolition and then also the construction?
Demo, demo the magic structure and then go back and construct.
I see. All right.
I also have a tour here that's provided made by Hampton. It kind of gives a layout of the entire site.
At one time, there was a little piece of property behind there. There was some question about that. Did that get resolved?
Yeah, that 20 or 30-foot strip there was, yes, sir, approved as part of the subdivision of Washington Crosses. Approved that a couple months ago.
Again, you see the parking lot and the landscaping there, but that's not subject to our consideration tonight?
It's really up to the planning commission because they send in a revised, this is what Marathon and Hampton have kind of come up with as a compromise to the original site plan. These are medians, which staff likes this because it delineates the internal traffic. Right now, you've got people there just, you want to get the HR block, you just go across the line. So this, this...
At a high rate of speed.
Yeah, yes, yes. So this works, and they also, Marathon wanted to keep the perpendicular parking. That is no bearing over the site plan. So we're fine with this as well, but I think that that's a discussion that Mr. Spangler probably needs to have with the planning commission or whatever you want. Want to approve that as it's submitted or...
That'd be later, right? We're not going to deal with that tonight, right? The additional part?
I'm going to leave that up to the planning commission to decide.
The biggest change that we were concerned with...
Sir, if you don't mind that you come up and give us your name for the...
Stephen Spangler, Marathon Realty Corporation.
Thanks, sir.
Is the original plan they'd submitted, the parking rigs were running parallel to the storefront, and that's just not typical. So we were looking at, you know, whether it's ABC Supply or a future tenant, that it's optimal to have a perpendicular parking field to that storefront. But to, you know, to do these types of islands and planters, I mean, I think that's something we're on board with, and, you know, to accent their submit on their COA, of course. But I think, again, our biggest concern was just the orientation of the parking in front of ABC. And they've changed that to where we needed it.
Okay. So Jason, just, I mean, they're going to come back eventually and get an approval or a COA if they...
For the... In conjunction with Hampton Inn.
So if there were any issues with the traffic pattern or anything like that, we could address it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the only thing that I was going to say that I was concerned about, which is what Jason stated earlier, was just making sure, even though technically I don't think those islands are on Hampton Inn's property, I think they're on Marathon's property.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a...
That's really the only caveat that I would, that I would, the only thing I would be concerned about is I could really, I'm not too concerned about the parking stalls yet. I mean, just except what's on Hampton Inn's property, but it would just be the delineation of the vehicles just from a safety perspective. That's really the only thing that I, right now, am concerned about.
And they may speak to this, but, you know, part of the contract will have reciprocal easement agreement, cross-parking agreement, so, you know, some of their parking field specifically be for the hotels actually aren't properties, so it's kind of a shared part.
Right, and I think we talked about, because I asked Jason if variance was required, and he said as long as they obtain the additional parking from Marathon, then they wouldn't be, they would be in compliance. So if we, if we do approve it, I would just, I would make a motion that we recommend, that we make a motion, just make it conditional upon finalization of whatever agreement that they have.
Well, I think that's wise, because we don't want to approve a demolition and a construction without knowing what we're going to have out front.
But we were pretty certain upfront that was going to happen.
Yeah, it'll be recorded at closing. It's typical in this type of arrangement. So, I mean, as far as our property, we're fine with perpendicular parks, but we'll bring it back because, as we discussed before, our contractual requirements also is to update the SOD, so that's going to be, I guess, a COA request that earlier date.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Sir, do you have some comments you'd like to...
Just a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
If you'd be kind enough to give us your first and last name and your physical address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jihad Halani, and I'm with Vision Engineering, 128 Eastern Road, Lexington, Kentucky, 40517. With me is Mr. Greer, Phil Greer, and Don Widetow, and Gordy Hargland, and John Cheatham, he's the architect. So, as you can tell, we proposed the first layout. We met on-site, and the main concern was channelizing traffic and make sure kind of traffic is divided. After meeting with a few different layouts, it sounded like staff is on board with revised layouts that kind of do the island and also the, our traffic circulations. So definitely, this is an improvement of what it used to be right now. Right now, it's a vacant building. It's going to be very, very handsome hotel with a lot of landscaping around it, and it's going to kind of bring the site, it's going to add more green spaces, it's going to reduce the amount of asphalt by adding this landscape island. So it's going to have positive impact, not only from adding an additional tenant, but also basically from motor quality, from aesthetic point of view, and accessibility in and out. So we just want to thank you for being here. We appreciate the comment from the staff. They were very helpful to us, they guided us to the right direction, and we just want to say thank you. And if you have any question, the architect is here, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions?
There'd be problems with the flood hazard district here. The only place, Mr. Bradley, is right here in this corner of the ABC building.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else care to address the commission? You're welcome to do so, but don't feel required to do so.
Well, my name is Phil Greer, Lexington, Kentucky, formerly Jenkins, Kentucky. I've probably been through there a time or two. We built First Hampton here about 30 years ago, and we're very happy. We want to stay there, and we're, we regret having to move this hotel, but we have, we closed with the state. They took our hotel with them at the domain, which is probably the most un-American thing I've ever been through. They take your, their property, and they tell you, they give you the money they think it's worth, so it's a really sad thing for us. My thought, first thought was, I'm getting pretty day on old, and I don't know if I got 30 more years, but, but I decided I probably ought to just go on down the road and forget it, and try to save a little money. And I went over to check it out and tell everybody, and there was a lady sitting on her knees cleaning a floor. She's probably 72 or 73, and I remember her from being on her knees cleaning the floor the day we opened 30 years ago. She has a few tears in her eyes, and she's scared that we're not going, she's not going to be able to get a job because of her age. So I went home and talked to my wife, and I said, I think we got to do this. We got to build this thing back. And so we jumped back in, and Marathon came up with a pretty good proposal. We love it. We were going to try to put back a hotel with a few more rooms and keep on paying taxes. But we really love Abingdon. I've always loved Abingdon since I was a high school senior. So we hope that you will look at us kindly tonight. Any questions?
Let me say, it's always been a beautiful hotel, always well-kept, and I go by it at least twice a day, and I'll even honor it for you, so if you have any problem.
Well, we've actually won awards at least three times since we've been there, number one in the country, as far as the grades you get, not the volume, but the grades. So we're proud of it. It's a great, it's a great place. We've got about 27 or 8 employees. We'd like to have a good transition, and hope you all help me out.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else would like to make any comments to the commission?
Do you want our architect to kind of show you a little bit about the hotel? Would you all be interested in that?
If, if he'd like to, he's welcome to do so. But again, they'll feel obligated to do so.
Oh, sure. John Cheatham, Lexington, Kentucky. Happy to be here in Abingdon and got to take a little tour. Beautiful first time here. If we could just go down to the... Just to give you some statistics on the building. It's a four-story building, fully sprinkled. It has some stone veneer accents in the center. The rest of the building, and it has a three-foot stone band wrapping all the way around to kind of anchor it. And then the rest of the building is ephesus, or you may know it as drive it. It's a stucco over insulation and painted. It'll be a very modern and nice hotel. It's about 50,000 square feet overall. Have a boardroom, a meeting room, a breakfast area, a pool, obviously, and, you know, front of house area, workout room. We've actually been working with Mr. Greer to make it a very nice facility in the meeting room that kind of walks out to the pool, which this is an old model from the beginning of our process, but it'll have some doors from the meeting room out to the pool deck area with a poolhouse that has a roll-up garage door that can be used for functions such as wedding parties and things like that. So, fully sprinkler, like I said, fully protected. We're going to be about 30 feet off of the existing strip mall, and the traffic will come down the side by Miss Nan's shop and one-way around the back of the hotel, and then we have actually a one-way drive out back into the parking lot, so, to access the pool back there. And the dumpster will be back there as well. So, that's about it. That wraps it up. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any comments in regards to this application? All right. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'd make a motion that we accept...
I'll second that.
And let's clarify the motion. This is also conditioned upon we're not approving the parking lot area, but that will come back at a later time. That's part of your motion?
That's part of my...
And is that part of your second, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion regarding the motion and the second?
So just to be clear then, Chair, are we going to make the motion to approve the COA but not subject to any of the parking requirements right now, or, I think, just the Marathon retain property? Just so that you're... okay. Because the... Well, my only concern was if we're, if we're giving a COA, technically, if it's only on their property, they're not in compliance with the zoning guides. Wanted to make sure that we clarified that.
Right.
It would be subject to satisfying the zoning requirements, so, that was my only concern, so.
Yes.
You think the motion should be amended?
I think, I think, Chair, do you think that's a good idea? Just amended to say that it do conditional upon satisfaction of the zoning requirements regarding the parking? Yeah.
I think it's wise to do that. Mr. Anderson, are you agreeable to amending your motion according to that?
Yes.
And Mr. Bradley, are you agreeable to your second today?
Yes, sir.
All right, any additional discussion? So everyone understands the motion. All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sprouls?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Marany?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
All right, very good.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Thelsohn.
Thanks, sir.
You all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Hope you all come out safely.
Thanks, man.
I had to call you.
Thanks, man.
I had to feel a little something there.
You guys live.
Come on out toward my house. It's going to be an extended stay.
Actify staying the whole way. I would stay.
That's true. All right, next on our agenda tonight is preliminary plot, Finkster Empire Drive, Abingdon, Virginia owner. This is a preliminary plot for the subdivision with 6.07 acres more less. Empire Drive, Abingdon, Virginia, located, as I said, on Empire Drive, tax map number, ID number 106-7-1A. Mr. Bundy?
Yes, what we're proposing is the remnant lots that are there, tried multiple commercial uses, and they just don't seem to be flying over a decade now. So a lot of the use around there is residential. Residential subdivision was once proposed on down Empire Drive, and so what we're proposing is taking the remnant lots, keeping the two that are already commercial, and doing the rest as residential. We've worked with the D-DOT, and they're amenable to letting us do low-volume entrances, which the way we have shown on the plans, where we have, will have a total of two more new connections right now. And we kind of, yeah, we just want to get some feedback from y'all before we do a lot more work on it.
I will add that it's compliant with the subdivision ordinance. ONI requires taking 500 square feet for single-family dwellings, and it meets that, permits requirements on that side of the Green Garden. That's what I'm assuming, Mr. Chairman.
Is that located up past where the greenhouse was? Yep, that's right. Okay. On the far side. There's two of them on the, on the west end, but the five on the east end of it, but I'm just trying to get away, get rid of it, you know? I want to be able to do it, and there's houses, it really fit right in, I feel like.
Now, is access to each one of these lots from a public street or highway, or do you still have that other... or do you still have that other little road that was sort of a service road, shall we say, that was privately owned in front?
Right. So what we have now is the service road does provide access to the two commercial lots that are there. And then the, all the residential lots would have access out to Empire Drive. But they'd be in sort of shared driveways on the right-of-way part, but those branch in personal driveways once you get on their property.
You're saying all those lots access Empire Drive?
Yep. They're all front Empire Drive.
Well, they front Empire Drive.
Yeah.
But they, they don't access them except through this little service road?
Yeah. So we've added these little low-volume driveways.
Right, right. Well, it's really an extension of the driveways. So how do you do that? Do you get like a, the developer constructs it and then there's just reciprocal easements? Or is, who maintains that?
Since this is all, these are all in the right-of-way. The only one that really is going to have a question of easement would be this one.
Okay.
If their house lot's going to here and this guy already sharing that easement, there's actually an encroachment. This driveway comes over and crosses the property there. And actually, I think they have a court case about where if it's an encroachment or not. But it's turned out to be an encroachment.
This is VDOT's right-of-way, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay, I forgot.
That's always going to be an issue because of Empire Drive.
So if this was in town right-of-way, we would maybe have a little bit more of a.
We're required improvements.
Well, because that's what I'm saying is because like my, my thought is like, what happens if this road isn't maintained? It's, so you're saying it's VDOT's responsibility to maintain this?
It's part of the interstate, part of the system.
Part of, yeah, okay. All right.
Matt, does, is everyone guaranteed the use of those private access?
Well, they're technically not private, but they're on the right-of-way, right?
Yeah.
And our, I met Cheryl with Rachel, VDOT, and she talked to her superior and, you know, assured me that since they own the property, they would have a legal right-of-way.
Yeah. I believe he's right. Yeah. If it's within the right-of-way, yeah.
The only thing that needs a easement of some sort is this part because that goes across that property onto that property. So you would have to grant, and this guy already has some sort of, I guess, prescribed easement.
Now, he really does. The judge looked at him in court and said, I want you to realize that this is verbal. If Mike wakes up in the morning, a mad mood and says you can't use it no more, you cannot use it no more.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
So that last lot on the, the last one on the right, that one accesses from Empire, I take it? It just didn't look like the.
Down on the far east?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the access.
Yeah, they, yeah. He would do the driveway so it gets just. Yeah.
Okay. So, so the, so it's got pavement close enough to, okay. Because it doesn't show what typical is during that.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Bundy, show, just tap that easterly lot there and just trace for me. If I built a house on that lot, how I would get to.
This one?
Yes, sir. A public street or highway?
You can come up through here on this driveway and go in right there.
Oh, you would come on that driveway?
Okay. How many other people are going to be using that driveway, the one you just traced?
So you got every, one, two, three, four. You got five here and then four and then three and then two and one.
And, and that right, or that driveway you're describing is on property owned by VDOT?
Correct.
And, and you're saying VDOT's going to maintain that?
It is on their property. How does that work?
From what Rachel explained to me, that it will not be paid. You know, she said it would be a low-density entrance. And that other five people can use it.
I think really just something inviting from VDOT. My concern would be that, you know, Rachel would tell you something, somebody.
I'll have it in writing.
They won't maintain it if it's not built to these legal standards. So you probably just have to have some shared agreement.
I figure what I'd have to do when I sold them is put it on the deeds that they, you know, have to share their expense of keeping the entrances up or the driveway up or whatever.
I think you will. It'll be like any driveway where VDOT's not going to go. Even if it's in the right-of-way, they're not going to maintain it.
I think the banks will require that, you know.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying is VDOT would be okay with that, but that's.
Yeah, they're okay with the concept, yeah.
And that's all they have to be. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean they take over.
Yeah, it doesn't mean they're going to maintain it though.
No, I wish they did. They had to structure it line up to the flat parts. It's crazy. It's counties, something like, up until it flattens out and then it's down.
So your understanding is from VDOT that they are going to maintain that?
No, no, no.
Oh, they are not going to maintain it?
No.
Sure.
So your responsibility is to maintain that?
Well, I figured that on the plan, it would be a share. But all five of those lots will share.
So that'll be recorded on the deed? And so how, what's the mechanism to enforce that? Is there an HOA? Is there a, I mean, how do you, how do they do that?
How do they do that? Usually there's an HOA because you have more barriers.
I mean, that, that might be something.
Why is that, what, what do you?
Well, I mean, normally you'd see that uncommon ground in the subdivision, but this is kind of a unique circumstances. Because our concern is, you know, we get two people there that are town residents calling the town and saying, hey, you know, this, 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 this is falling apart. And, well, I can't do anything about it because it's not, within our right-of-way, it's in VDOT. And they call VDOT and say, well, we can't, we don't do anything about it because the original, we told the original developer that we're not going to maintain it. And then we get, so we kind of want to prevent that. I think that's maybe what Scott was alluding to.
Yeah, I could do a HOA and just be responsible. They didn't pay me to fix it.
Or somebody, or, you know, or eventually have some mechanism by which we have on record that we know that it's going to be maintained and that there's a legal mechanism to do that.
I don't think we need to see that before we approve this.
Well, that's what I was going to, I don't, I don't know what our legal rights are, you know, when we have. You know, technically, an HOA is a private contract between the parties, but since this is involving, I, I don't know, that gets kind of hairy. It might be something where the attorney might need to.
Can you not?
It's just a concern is what I have. I don't, I don't know where our parameters are.
But relatively, it's not the town's decision because it's not the town.
Well, it's our decision to approve the plat though. It's our decision to approve the, and that's why it could be contingent upon us being satisfied.
You'd have to have a certain contingency that, you know, legal access is granted from both roads or something.
Right.
Right.
But just remember that it does have to go back to a file.
Yeah.
That's true. We're just in the preliminary stage, so. But you could see the predicament that we could be in, in, in ten or twenty years from now. It's going to look bad on the town if we don't assure that there's some protection for the other homeowners who say they want to pay for it, but the other three don't want to.
Right.
And this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use designation. We'd like to see it residential. It just, I mean, it's one of those crazy situations where we just don't, that's not our right-of-way.
Well, it's in a really undesirable location for commercial, so. I've actually driven down there, trying to find his house, and I took a wrong turn and ended up down.
You know, those lots have been grown up. You know, Paul J.D. Moorefield tried to do something with it forever. And I'm danged. I'm trying my best to do something. I don't want to be, I don't want to pay taxes and have it sitting there and bush-haul it every year. And I want to do something with it, you know.
You can do a joint maintenance agreement on it and as you sell each lot, have those persons put it in the deed, record it. Make it subject to that. But still, you've got the problem. One of these snowy mornings, you got a foot of snow on there. They're going to be calling, saying, town, I pay taxes. Come down here and scrape this out.
Yeah.
And that's when I forward that call to Mr. Marini.
Well, well, it's, if it's, if it's within, so basically, even though it's within VDOT, right, the VDOT's one you'd be concerned about Empire Drive. Yeah, those are things we're going to have to think about.
They're not going to accept it into their system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I'm almost thinking it's, it looks and smells like it's a private road. It's just being built within public right-of-way. I don't think the town should take on the responsibility. I'm, we're not, I'm not opposed to the development. I think this is probably, you know, a good use of the property, which we've got residential in the back. It's just what the town's, you know, obligations are going forward. And, and, you know, to get a truck back, you know, one of our snowplows, you probably need to get one of those small little ATV, whatever they use for the smaller driveways where people have those little, you know, that's probably what needs to be done. And that, I think we ought to have, I don't know if that needs to be on the plat or if that needs, like you said, at closing, but that, that the entire maintenance responsibility of this is the sole responsibility of the, of the property owners.
I, I think, frankly, think that if we approve this, we ought to approve it with the idea that all of that is spelled out to the property owners in, in, in a very clear fashion. Because we know, we can sit here and anticipate what's going to happen. And, and, you know, if we don't do something now, then at some point, the town's going to have to deal with it. And I think we need to make sure we eliminate that based on knowing that the town's not going to do it and, you know, VDOT's not going to do it. And if, if it's not spelled out absolutely clearly to the property owners, then the property owners are going to get upset. You got, we, we need to avoid that.
Well, I think what Wayne said is just having that joint maintenance agreement. You're saying that it's a similar document and you're not giving legal advice to them, just so we clear that up. Something, something in a similar situation that would happen. You could do something like that. And then you're saying they would sign that document, that closing? Okay. And it becomes a civil matter, obviously, because a civil, if, if somebody weren't to pay, I mean, it would be up to them to have to, they would have recourse.
I was probably on Praise Drive and we had a maintenance agreement on the road. And everybody that involved it, but having this property had to. If, if you bought twenty tons of gravel, it was split between eight different people, you know.
Where was this at?
On Praise Drive.
Praise Drive?
Praise Drive. It's in the county.
Oh, okay. Who collects that? I mean, how does that work?
I live, I live on a similar thing. I've got, there's three of us on it. And each one of our deeds says that we are responsible for maintenance of the entire thing.
And do you guys do it?
And so we just prorate the cost based on how much.
Okay.
I use a thousand feet of, the guy next to me uses five hundred feet of, and we just prorate.
Of your front engine?
That's exactly what they do.
Okay. And so like, one of the guys procures the, the vendor or whatever, the contractor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you guys just all get together and pay the?
That's right.
Okay, so it, it can work?
It does work.
Without an HOA, it does work.
But it's, but it's in the deed. It says you're responsible for it.
That's the key.
It's on our deed too, on Praise Drive.
Is this driveway currently in existence that's on this plat when you trace horseman?
This driveway is currently in existence.
No, I'm talking about up on the eastern side.
This one's in existence, this one is not. None of that is.
No.
Okay.
I think something that would be acceptable, maybe Mr. Chair, and let me know if this is okay. If we saw a form of the joint maintenance agreement, I, you think that would be something that we could at least, you know, conditional upon satisfactory? And, and, and I don't know, maybe, maybe not necessarily contingent upon us approving it, but at least them providing us a, a draft of what the joint maintenance agreement would look like. At least we would have an idea. Granted, we don't, we know that wouldn't be executed until closing, but it would at least, in the spirit of cooperation, I mean, give us some assurance that, you know, some of the concerns that we need.
I would also want to see something from the state say that it's acceptable for that.
For them to construct that, okay.
On their property.
Okay. So if they haven't written, they can just.
We do have, we do have an email from Rachel.
I'm going to be a grand.
We do have that.
Yeah, I've talked to her pretty much.
Being that Mr. Mcaster has decided that he wants to make it residential, that's the reason why VDOT is, will allow him to construct this, but they would like to see the site plan. So if we approved the preliminary plat, we can have Mr. Mcaster, Mr. Bradley send that to Rachel and make sure that she's okay with it. Get correspondence back from Rachel at that point.
Yeah. I'll do whatever. I just have to set them to get rid of it.
Man, right there, it says, it says, here's the five lots we serve by drive outside of VDOT right-of-way and maintenance.
I mean, it says they have to approve, I'm reading this email. It says they have to approve the site plan. Have they approved the site plan yet?
Well, I mean, she would have to look at each individual site. I think that she's looking to.
I mean, we just make it conditional upon VDOT approval. The site plan approval is really what we do.
And then I think we also need to.
It might even be done by the time we approve the final plat. I mean, how, so easily. Okay, so then we might not need to worry about it when it comes back to final approval.
If VDOT approves anything in their right-of-way, so.
Yeah. Do they have to be, do they have to sign this plat though, since it involves it right-of-way? Do you know?
We've never had them do that before.
Well, it's kind of, you need things I just.
I thought we did when we did this the last time. I thought they had.
It would, it wouldn't hurt if they're, if an agency, I just didn't know if they did that.
I'm pretty sure they made it.
Was it Rachel or was it?
I just, it just, you know, you got all those signature blocks that we have on VDOT.
I mean, I would recommend it if we could do it. Since it's orders, state right of, or with the Commonwealth property.
Hey, you're going to want something in writing.
Yes, record it. With, with this. Yeah, that'll, that'll cover us for that then, essentially.
Correct.
And if you don't have that, as, as you mentioned a minute ago, things not going to run with that.
No, you, I'll have to have it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so you have, are we talking about two conditions?
No, I, I think what we're saying was, once, if, if, if there's a signature block on the, on the final plat and VDOT signs off on it, well, they've, they've agreed to it. I mean, they have to review the site plan that he's going to submit, which he says will probably be done before the final plat anyways. And then upon approval of us, if we do approve the final plat and then eventually the council approves it, there's going to have to be a signature by VDOT, is what Matt is saying.
Give it up? I think if we, before we, if we're going to start down this road, we ought to say, A, that's required, and B, that it, that has to be part of the, there has to be an agreement with the, the landowners. It has to be part of the deed. I think you might as well say all that now, or because.
Oh, sure.
And I, and I think, you know, whatever conditions, I would say we need to put those conditions on this now. It takes care of everybody. It gives them protection. I'd hate to get to a final plat and forget about this discussion or not have the, have the, you know, protect the landowners.
No, yeah, that was my assumption is that they know this is what we're looking for. And so that's why I felt like, since it's a preliminary stage, we don't really take a formal motion tonight. Or do we, will, will we take a formal motion to recommend? Okay. So then we probably do have to make that a conditional.
Everything, when they resubmit it, that all that should be rolling.
Okay. Would it be appropriate then, gentlemen, to have a note on the plat referring to a joint agreement? Would you be opposed to doing that? Or is that, is that allowed? Per, per, per the code, state code? I don't know if it's. How, how specific?
The state couldn't do.
Okay. Just, just, just to acknowledge it that, you know, maintenance of a, is the joint maintenance, you know, agreement between the parties.
Right.
Because, you know, people pull up the plat, we just want to be able to pull it up and show, you know, it's on the deed, it'll show up on a title report, you know, anything like that.
Sure.
Okay. So, so Kenny, what you're saying is that we make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, condition upon approval from IDOT of the site plan. I'm sorry. I'm still in Illinois. Sorry. I'm happy to be in Virginia. Don't give me a wrong, okay? Approval from VDOT, which VDOT is, this is on camera, I won't say it. this is on camera, I'm gonna say, compared, I don't wanna say that, VDOT, I had very good success working with VDOT, just wanna say that, very positive things, which is a good thing, but. So, make it conditional upon having them approve, uh, the construction of the road, and then us also approval of assurance that there's a joint maintenance agreement for, for the, for the roadway.
I think if we did, if you want to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, in that, in that form.
Is that, way?
Or a joint maintenance agreement, or a homeowners association.
Or homeowners association, either one, more than, yeah.
That get to where you want to be as well?
Is that a?
Yes, as long as, as long as they get something from VDOT, that it would be in recordable form to put in the chain and title saying that they have a right to go across their property there and construct this driveway, is, is what I would be interested in.
And I, I think also that we need that joint maintenance.
And the joint maintenance agreement.
Okay, so let me, let me retract that motion, I don't know if that's proper rules, if that's the proper term, amend the motion. Uh, approve, make a recommendation to approve the preliminary plat, conditioned upon, uh, approval by VDOT of the site plan in assurance that the property owners there can traverse that said drive to access their properties, as well as an assurance that there is either a joint maintenance agreement or a HOA to, um, to maintain, uh, the, the private drive slash right-of-way. All right, that sound good?
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? If not, can we have?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Stroes?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Mariney?
Aye.
Mr. Schuman?
Uh.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
That is.
You know, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere.
You got some work.
I'd like to come down and.
I know.
I'm not going back to Illinois anyways. I did a little meal, and I.
That would be a disaster. So removal.
Thanks. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Mike.
All right, continuing on our agenda here, is any discussion that anyone has, including old business matters, not on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I have something, and I, I know we had a discussion about this in terms of the planning commission, but I also wonder about, um, the situation with the town. And I hate to keep, keep beating this horse to death, but I was coming, uh, from, uh, I was coming, I guess, into town, and at, right in the middle of the day, when one of these fuel trucks pulled out, and I mean, he pulled out right in the middle of everything. And my concern is, I understand what Cam Bell told us, that, that the, that the planning commission really didn't have the ability to, to say anything about what was off-site, but I wonder, because there was an agreement that the town entered into, if the town does, cause I'm gonna tell you, and I saw, um.
Don't make, what are you, which particular property you're referring to, I'm sorry?
The, the gas and go, the truck.
Okay, 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 I don't mind, I didn't hear that.
And because I, I also saw, you know, something from, um, Rick Humphries on a different day, but, but I mean, the guy, what, what I saw is, he was coming out, and basically people had to stop to let him out. And, um, I understand what Cam says about our, you know, our ability to deal with that, but I, but I also think there was an agreement with the town that they agreed to, to, to bring these products in, and that agreement was signed by the town, and I don't know how that is impacted by what Cam said.
What did the agreement, what was the nature of the agreement?
That they would only deliver at certain times.
I've heard that, say, somebody else said that.
Well, see.
So, there's an agreement that exists?
Well, that's my problem, the planning commission put a caveat on there, when Cam came in, and I think Cam's right, I agree with what he said, is what we did as a planning commission, was we approved something, but we approved it, and the approval ended up being on an area that wasn't part of the, what we were looking at. But, but, but the problem I have is, I think the town signed an agreement, and there may be a different legal requirement on that agreement, and my suggestion is that somebody look into that, because I really, and I know Wayne feels the same way, th- this is just an accident waiting to happen. And, 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 and when I witnessed this the other day, I hadn't witnessed it as much as you have, um, but, uh, but I, I mean, it made me cringe the way this guy exited that property.
What time of the day was it?
It was right in the middle of the day. And, I mean, people had to stop to let him get on, he was going out, turning left.
Turning left, going southbound?
To the, he had finished pausing his fuel, he was coming back this way, and, um, it, uh.
They, they said part of the problem is it's like automated, so when the tanks are.
When, when they get to be.
It's like, bring me gas, it doesn't matter what time it is, it's just, so, trying to break that.
Interesting, there's like a sensor in their tanks.
It's all automated.
But it's, like I say, it, I know Wayne's talked about it, but that is, to me, when I saw that the other day, it, uh, it certainly got.
How often is that happened? I don't know anything about how often you have to fill up the.
Fuel delivery time.
We asked for that information.
Aren't you supposed to not furnish it?
They wouldn't give us the information, and then.
The contractor would never give us the information.
Oh, you did ask for it.
And they would not furnish it, and of course, we were told that that couldn't be handled by the planning commission, but I don't know if there's an agreement with the town, and I think it would be worth looking at, um, again, because it, it is not a good situation.
Well, we'll certainly look, and see if we can find something, do you remember what timeframe that was put in?
I've got it, I've got it.
You got, you got whole file? Cause I'm sure the gas station, or the, the grocery store probably preceded the gas station, right?
All right, any other matters?
Do we want to update them on the, what we're doing with the zoning code?
I, I have one question.
Yes.
Is this structure about capable of supporting that penalty? Could we not?
I think so, I'm not real sure why it's in Florida, but I can, I can ask to make this part.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna actually be redoing, um, carpet probably in here, so maybe when we do that, I can talk to Rick, and maybe we can get that up there.
I'd like to bring, I'd like to bring back to our attention the tractor and trailer advertisers. We have beat it about for at least six months, if not longer, and we're no closer today than we were six months ago to getting something done regarding that. And if we talk about entrance corridors, and we talk about things being, uh, looking appropriate, and it, welcoming people to Abingdon, it's not there, so we need to see what is available to us, uh, to, uh, to eliminate that problem.
Well, one of the things that, um, we could do, if you feel like, I was gonna give, Jason and I, we're gonna try to give an update on what, what's going on with the zoning code, but if you feel like there's an urgent need to try to address this prior to final adoption of a sign code, I mean, we could just consider amending it, and trying to come up with some language to, uh, to address it before, you know, the full comprehensive. We did actually talk to the owner again, and, um, since our code doesn't have a, a lot of teeth, um, I think we got the standard response, but if you feel like, um, we should do that now, instead of waiting, then, I mean, that's up to you guys, if we want to pursue that.
He does not give a very impressive site coming in, in my opinion.
I agree, I just, actually, I called him over the weekend on something I saw on that entrance corridor, not that, but something else, and.
Yeah, I, I think we.
People like to put trash out, like a week and a half before, uh, the, uh.
Pick up.
Yeah, they handled that one, so we handled it, um, but it's just, it's just really disturbing that people would want to do that.
I, to me, I think it needs to be dealt with, because one of the things I think you gotta worry about is, if you don't deal with it, it is unsightly, but then you get people where you're going to enforce your, you know, the code that we do have, and then somebody's gonna come up and say, yeah, you're enforcing this for me, and look at what that guy's doing.
No, I understand.
I, I, I mean, I think it needs to get.
Well, knowing what we know, uh, now, which we'll, we'll give an update on what we're up to the zoning code, it's probably gonna be a little while before we get to the, to the sign code, so if, if that's the, um, the desire of the planning commission, I mean, we can, we can try to put something together and bring it to the, uh, of course, it has to be initiated by the planning commission, or, we could bring a draft back to the planning commission, put some verbiage, and if they'd like to make that motion to the, to the, uh, to the council to recommend it for adoption, they still come back here for a formal public hearing, but I think we can come up with something.
Can that be done by the next meeting?
Oh, I think so.
Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion that we ask Mr. Boswell and staff to formulate some type of an amendment to the signed ordinance to address this issue before the next meeting?
I'll do, I'll, I'll make it.
All right, sir, second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we look forward to seeing that on our next agenda.
So, just to update everybody, what's going on with the zoning code and the sign code, we've kind of gone in a couple of different directions. Uh, we started off with doing the sign code, uh, Jason showed me initial draft, and I had some, some concerns and some questions about some of the language pertaining to, uh, the content, as you might know, that there's, it was a Supreme Court case several years ago, Reed versus Towne and Gilbert, it was an Arizona case, and it essentially said that the towns can't regulate content on signs, so we have to, basically, most of, most sign codes, up to that point, were probably unconstitutional. So, it really puts some challenges on municipalities, because as much as they want to regulate content, the court said, in their opinion, that there's reasonable standards that municipalities can use to regulate content, they have to be reasonable, I don't know if that was the exact word, it was used, it's been a while since I read it, but. So, what we're going to do is, we have a, a firm under, under, under a contract right now that we had used for some services, and they were also used, um, during, uh, the interim manager process, and, uh, Berkeley Group out of, what city are they out of? It's in central Virginia somewhere, I don't think.
I remember Charlottesville.
No, they're north of Charlottesville, uh, anyhow, uh, they, they have a planning, uh, planning division. We actually did talk to the consulting firm that was working on our comprehensive plan, ERP. They probably had a longer timeframe in which to complete it, and they are not as staff-heavy on the zoning code rewrite side, in fact, it was just a staff of one. Uh, a gentleman who's working on our comprehensive plan, which, you know, they're doing a great job, I think, with that, but, um, it would, it would be more labor-intensive, I think, for them, and so, we, we looked at a few other firms, and since there is a reciprocal, I'm sorry, cooperative agreement with Berkeley on these services in other jurisdictions, uh, the state procurement code allows us to utilize those services, utilize those terms, um, since they've gone out for RFQs, or RFPs for those services, and so we sent it to our attorney, and, and he's concurred we could do that, so. Since we do have an existing relationship with them, we have an existing contract with them, uh, or it actually inspired, but it was for prof- non-professional services, didn't deal with engineering, or, or, or financial, or legal. We decided it would be in our best interest to go ahead and just get them on board and have them do that, and we talked about that at the last work session, I believe, um, I wasn't here, but. And we're actually in the process of getting the contract documents ready, and so they will do what's called a, an analysis of the zoning code. It's sort of a precursor to what the zoning code rewrite would involve, it, you know, it'll identify what areas of the code are inconsistent with state code, what, you know, maybe some best practices. You know, we, we, Jason and I questioned, well, can't they just jump right into it, but I guess as a planner, they feel like this is a necessary thing to do, and it makes sense, but, um, it's good to get some objectivity, they could give us their recommendations, but this would precede any, any ordinance revision, so. Knowing that, it's not like we're just gonna jump right into the sign code ordinance, and doing that, so we, we, our, our hope is to do the, um, analysis done by Berkeley Group, then, after that, the first thing to do is the sign code, cause that was the first, I mean, order of business, as the council wanted us to do, at least that's what the mayor conveyed to me, with the council, cause I wasn't here, you know, during a lot of those discussions, but it was some, some strategic planning meetings I had last year, and I think it's probably something you guys have talked about a long time as well. So, that's the plan, is to do the, uh, the, the analysis of the, of the zoning code, and then jump into the, uh, jump into the sign code, which that could be done separately as a standalone document, i- it's, um, the only issue that would complicate things is if in the final rewrite of the zoning code, we decided to, you know, drastically change our zoning districts, and somehow the zoning, the sign code was, you know, mirrored some of those, or maybe some of the regulations were only, you know, applicable in certain zoning districts, but I think we're at a point now where we just need to get the sign code revised, and if we have to tweak it down the road, we will, so I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, that sounded good to me.
Okay. You're just not saying that just to get out of here, are you?
I told you I didn't feel good.
Okay, you didn't feel good, okay, so I'll stop talking.
Any other announcements or other matters that they brought before the commission, or? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Jimmy.
Yeah. Sure.
Uh, well, that was from EP.
Yeah, let's, um, make sure that we're, John, is, uh, we call him Deuce, is that what we're calling him?
Yeah.
IT guys, name is John, we had a John.